Good evening. Welcome to this October 16th regular board meeting of the Jackson Public School District. We so appreciate such a large attendance tonight. I call the meeting to order and before I ask Dr. Belcher to introduce our student who will bring us the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to welcome back Dr. Ed Seback. He is back with us, the eighteen. Dr. Belcher?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight I have the, today I have the pleasure of introducing London Harper. She's a fifth grade honor roll student at Bar Elementary School. She has attended Bar Elementary since she was in second grade. London is the niece of Mike Harper, who serves as a parent, leader, and liaison at Bar Elementary School. London is a member of Bar Elementary's National Honor Society and served on the school's praise dance team. London's future is being a teacher and a lawyer.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It may be seen.
Thank you so much, London. Would you stay for a minute to have your picture taken with Mr. Figures? And to receive a token of our appreciation for your joining us tonight. Thank you, London.[144.25][144.25](APPLAUSE). Next we'll have a moment of inspiration from Marshall Wade, the Student Minister and Finance Manager at Meadowbrook Church of Christ. And we have other members from the Meadowbrook Church of Christ congregation with us tonight. Will you please stand? We're so happy that you all joined us tonight at this time. Thank you. We welcome you. Mr. Wade?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Green.
Oh, Mr. Wade, I'm so sorry. I need to introduce you. Excuse me. Marshall Wade is the Youth and Finance Minister at Meadowbrook Church of Christ. He's originally from Memphis, Tennessee, where he graduated from Whitehaven High School. Afterwards, he attended Oklahoma Christian University, where he double majored in accounting and vocational ministry and minored in international studies. He also earned a master's degree in Christian ministry from Abilene Christian University. Pastor Wade led the Meadowbrook Church of Christ congregation's response to an initiative with the Office of Partners in Education entitled "Time, Talent, and Treasurers." This initiative is designed to encourage data-driven partnerships between local churches and our schools in these three areas. Time to volunteer as book buddies for elementary reading tutors. Talent, retired librarians will serve to mentor novice librarians. And treasures, financial contributions to purchase library books. Meadowbrook Church of Christ provided $7,500 in books to Bailey APEC Middle School to address specific needs in its library based on an audit conducted by the Mississippi Department of Education. So again, we appreciate some of you all from Meadowbrook Church of Christ joining us tonight. Mr. Wade is married to Emily Wade, an eighth grade leader to her teacher at Brandon Middle School. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Wade.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Green and Board of Trustees for the invitation and Thea Faulkner for arranging it. We're humbled by being here and humble that you would want us to come and for me to speak. About eight months ago, our church started a campaign to identify about four local organizations that we could holistically support, that by being physically present, by being spiritually prayerful, and by being, and using our financial resources to help. And one of those organizations was Jackson Public Schools. Two of the people who were tasked to be bridge builders between the two organizations, our church and this school district, was myself and Jason Eifling. And I can't speak for Jason necessarily, but I can speak for myself when I say that it was quite overwhelming to think about how small our church is and how big this school district is and try to figure out what we could do to make an impact. And one thing that I kept coming back to, and it's really my word of encouragement to the people here today, is that to focus on the small things, is that we have a lot of things to do, we have a lot of challenges to try to meet and to overcome, but all that we are really being called to do is do the small things. And to the students here, to the parents here, one of those things that you're doing already is by being here, by making your presence felt, by making your voice be heard, and that's a small thing, but it can't stop today. That every day we have to do the small things, that we have to figure out those small things that we can do in order to make a difference, because if we collectively do the small things, they'll all come together to make a big impact. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for joining us.[394.81][394.81](APPLAUSE). And thank you again, Meadowbrook Church. Dr. Luckett will give you a token of our appreciation. Thank you so much, Mr. Wade. Item two on our agenda, let the record show that we have a quorum. All seven members of our board are seated tonight. Board, you have before you the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as distributed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and second, that we adopt the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have adopted the agenda. Item four, we have two items, reading and approval of our minutes from our September 18th, 2018 meeting and our September 27th, 2018 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve our minutes as distributed?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, that we approve our minutes, item A and B, September 18th and September 27th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes have been approved. Item five, our public participation, general comments and/or proposed policy issues. We have one item on the agenda. I'll call for item A, Ms. Michelle Henry, President of the P-16 Council. Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Good evening. What a wonderful day it is where our, there's no parking in our school board meeting and there's no seating in our school board meeting. This is awesome. The establishment of P-16 councils is required by Mississippi Code 37-18-5/4 and Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards Process Standard 12, which reads, "There is an organized system to encourage community involvement, parental communication, and business partnerships in school district decision-making. A school district that has been designated as failing, as defined by the State Department of Education, shall establish a community-based pre-kindergarten through higher education P-16 council. And a district and/or school designated as a D or F shall establish a community-based pre-kindergarten through higher education P-16 council." The 2017-18 accountability ratings have been released by the Mississippi Department of Education. And in the Jackson Public School District, we see fourteen elementary schools that are rated A or B on the A-through-F accountability system, one of which is the number-one school in the state of Mississippi for the second consecutive year.[583.29][583.29](APPLAUSE). Our elementary schools set the foundation for success in our district, and we are super excited. However, across the district, we have several schools that are in school improvement and/or are underperforming. The State Department of Education has identified several Jackson Public Schools that could use support. Studies have shown a direct correlation between community engagement and successful schools. However, family and community engagement doesn't just happen because we want it to. It must be intentionally designed. And therefore, collaboration with the district, the P-16 Community Engagement Council has agreed to assist those schools through targeted community support. Our primary focus as a state mandated council is to review the policies of the Jackson Public School District and offer suggestions of action to the school board based on the policy. Over the next couple of weeks, the P-16 Community Engagement Council will hold intimate meetings centered around policies focused on curriculum and instruction, discipline, and student truancy, and facilities. We will discuss the intention, understanding, and implementation of those policies. We would like those intimate meetings to be as full as our school board meeting is tonight. So, community, when we call on you for your support, we ask that you answer. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Henry. Attorney Turner, do we have others prepared to give remarks?
Yes, you do. Board members, you have several persons who've signed up to address you tonight. I'll read them in the order they were provided to me. First is Ms. Tatiana Hollingbird. She wants to address you on the Forest Hill High School band.
Hello. My name is Tatiana Hollingbird. To the Board of Trustees, guests, and Forest Hill family, I am here today to speak about Forest Hill Band and what I think should happen. Okay, from my eighth grade year on, I have missed Mr. Jones regarding over joining the band, and ever since then, I have been thankful for the opportunity of being a part of the band. Mr. Jones took me under his wing, and he helped me so much to become a better leader, a wiser person. From then on, I just want to say thank you. From Mr. Jones' perspective, I feel as though he loves us kids as much as anyone would love somebody. He takes us under his wings, not even just for Forest Hill kids, but Merle, anybody really, and Mr. Jones, he helped mold us. And I feel as though Mr. Jones should come back to his family and help us and guide us. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Jennifer Lloyd, Forest Hill High School Situation.[781.23][781.23](APPLAUSE).
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jennifer Lloyd. I am a retired educator of 37 years for Jackson Public Schools at Hardy Middle School.[798.13][798.13](APPLAUSE). I have been the outstanding educator. I have been the district Outstanding Teacher of the Year, and I am here to plead to you, the board, to reinstate Mr. Demetri Jones and give those kids what they need to succeed.[820.01][820.01](APPLAUSE). It is a sad day in education when someone so dedicated to this field has been stripped of that opportunity.[835.56][835.56](APPLAUSE). Who among us has not made a misstep or a mishap either as a child or even now as adults? We know that that is a rhetorical question, because we always make mistakes. It is the job of the people who here who have his job in your hands and the future of these students in your hands to make the right choice. Education is a round and a round revolving door of mistake, learn, continue, mistake, learn, continue. If you nail these students and you nail Mr. Jones, what have we to look forward to? Educators come around, very few, a real educator. And we have to be sure that we don't send someone away from this district whom I love. I am a product of Jackson Public Schools. I graduated from Callaway in 1974.[908.19][908.19](APPLAUSE). I have been at Hardy Middle School from the time I graduated from high sc, I mean, from college at Jackson State, and I was there for thirty-seven and a half years. Give this man an opportunity to continue what he's doing. These kids need him, you need him.
Alvin Jackson, Forest Hill Band Director, Mr. Jones.[954.82][954.82](APPLAUSE).
Greetings. My name is Alvin Jackson, and I'm the booster president for Forest Hill High Band. I'm here to show my support. Everybody with Forest Hill, stand up. Let everybody see who you are.[983.82][983.82](APPLAUSE). You all can be seated, you can be seated. We're here in support of Mr. Jones, who's been doing an outstanding job. Did you know when he took over the program, it was a dying program? He spent eight years building the program to be one of the premier programs in Jackson Public Schools. A lot of you all don't know, he is a math educator, just like myself. I taught math at Jim Hill High School when Ms. Hilliard was there running things, like she always does. Did outstanding job. Mr. Demetrius, Tatiana didn't say that he tutored her to help her get in the STEM program at Hines in Utica. She's a STEM student at Hines. Because of his tutelage, helping her in math, she was able to get in that program. That's the kind of man Mr. Demetrius Jones is. Tireless hours with our kids, making a difference in their lives. We need to reinstate Mr. Jones. We need to get our kids back where they need to be, practicing their instruments, sharpening their tools and their skills, so that they can go on to higher education and be successful in everything that they do. He has countless students that have gone through the Forest Hill Band Program and now are being successful in higher education. I'm blessed. I can pay for my child to go to school, me and my wife. We can pay for our child to go to school. A lot of the parents can't. They're depending on band at Forest Hill to get their children an opportunity to be successful in life. So I come here today pleading. I'm pleading on behalf of Mr. Jones. I'm pleading on behalf of the band program at Forest Hill. Mr. Hampton is doing an outstanding job as the building principal. He's talking about our kids as being scholars, and he's making the necessary changes to make a change in Forest Hill. Forest Hill used to be a B or either a C school. With us working together, we can do that. We can bring Forest Hill back to a successful school here in Jackson Public School District. But now we need your help. We're here for Mr. Jones. We're here for our students. Thank you all for your consideration.
Larry Wilson, supporter of the Forest Hill High School Band and Mr. Jones.[1133.01][1133.01](APPLAUSE).
Can I have two band students come stand behind me, please? Any two band students, just two band students.
Hello.
I got two right here. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. I am, my name is Larry Wilson, and I too, as the band booster president said, attended Jim Hill High School, and Ms. Hilliard was my former teacher as well. Good to see you, Ms. Hilliard.[1164.83][1164.83](APPLAUSE). I'm here, I am here to voice my concern for the Forest Hill Band. I had a chance to talk to Dr. Green last night at the session that the district held. I'm grateful that you guys gave us that opportunity to talk to the superintendent. But tonight, tonight, I want to make sure that you guys realize the impact that this decision has had so far. My son is a senior in the band at Forest Hill.[1192.08][1192.08](APPLAUSE). My son, for the sake of time, we can hold applause to the end. My son also made All-City last year, and so when All-City convenes again, I would definitely hope that Forest Hill has some members of their band in the All-City band this year. As long as they're not practicing and not on the field, that cannot happen. So I hope that when All-City convenes, we have support from Forest Hill as well. The loss of their senior year playing in band, you don't get to redo your senior year. You get one time, you get one shot. It's the same thing we tell our parents, we want them to be involved in their kid's life. If they miss out on that performance at school, they don't get to redo it. These kids don't get another senior year. Let's not ruin it. Loss of their band director in the middle of the year and loss of the rest of the year, because no band director can come in in the middle of the year. No band director can come in and continue to do what Mr. Jones has done. So we can't go find another band director. I would like to see Mr. Jones come back, not another band director. Also in finding out, since Mr. Jones has been suspended, he's also, I'm not, does he teach band? Okay? So since he's suspended, we don't have a band teacher at Forest Hill. So I don't know if this district or if this board knows, but the students have been in the auditorium during band class. There's no substitute, or gym. There's no substitute, so there's no substitute teacher in the auditorium with those band students. I also heard the counselors are being pulled to watch those students in the auditorium. So there was no planning at all when we pulled Mr. Jones, not only for the band itself, but for band class. Students were instructed to come pick up their instruments today from the band hall. I'm not sure if the board knows that. They were instructed over the intercom to come to the band hall, and after getting to the band hall, that's when they found out to come get their instruments. We are, also, the students have a loss of being productive on a Friday night, and instead of being in a high school football game, they're back on the streets of Jackson.[1313.83][1313.83](APPLAUSE). As I told Dr. Green last night, board, as I told Dr. Green last night, this past Friday night, while at home, I'm looking at my son at the dining room table on a Friday night, and any other Friday night, he would be on the field with his band members and with his classmates, making memories for a lifetime. Let's not, let's not have them at home on another Friday night.[1341.15][1341.15](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much for your comments.
Board members, if you don't mind, security has asked me to announce the driver of an orange Hyundai Sonata has someone blocked in who needs to get out urgently. If you would please go move your car. An orange Hyundai Sonata. Next is Kahendi Gaynor.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Kahende Gaynor. I'm a proud parent of the band. This is my wife, Navi Gaynor. I have a son that is on the band. His name is Amari Gaynor. The definition of misunderstanding is a failure to understand something correctly. The band's performance was submitted to the Mississippi High School Activities Association, and they have been practicing on this performance since the summer. A snapshot of an eight-minute band performance has propelled this country, the state, its communities, and a school district to take sides without the benefit of communicating what actually happened on that field in Brookhaven. We have let a snapshot be the deciding factor for a man that has done more good for this school, for our children, for this community, and weighing that against a decision that was misunderstood or taken out of context. When we, when we are quick to judge and refuse to communicate with another, what we are, what are we really communicating to our children? What are we telling our children? What are we teaching our children? When a man can be fired for performing his job, how do our children learn about second chances? There's been no pushback from the district officials for the foul language, the threats, the condemnation, the negative exposure our children have faced on the news and social media. Government officials have weighed in without even seeing the performance or hearing Mr. Jones himself. My son, who was a part of the band as well as his members, are the ones that are affected the most. They are the ones with the doors locked on the band hall. They are the ones in jeopardy of not receiving scholarships or even a grade for band.[1484.63][1484.63](APPLAUSE). There is something truly wrong, there is something truly wrong with us as a society when we don't take the time to talk to one another, to understand each other's side. This could have been used as a way to teach our children how to resolve issues with communication.[1503.83][1503.83](APPLAUSE). But instead, it's another example of what happens when opposing views react instead of respond. If we make a list of all the positive things Mr. Jones has contributed to during his eight years at Forest Hill, it would outweigh the negative chatter from outside communities and government officials. And it would truly show how valuable he is to this school. I am demanding that Superintendent Green and all of the board members show our students what a second chance looks like by giving Mr. Jones his job back and allowing our students to perform again. These students have worked hard, they've worked too hard. And now, Mr. Jones has worked too hard, and it's time to let them play.[1553.76][1553.76](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for your comments. Thank you so much.
Bishop Ronnie Crudup?
Wow, it's hard to follow that. To Dr. Green and Dr. Harrison and to the board and to the staff as well. I'm here because I have the privilege of pastoring children who go to Forest Hill, as well all over this district. I also have a grandchild that goes to Forest Hill, and then I'm just concerned about what happens in the city. And two things come out of this sad saga to me. One is an overreaction, the second is the loss of a teachable moment. The first is an overreaction. You know, when I first heard about what happened down at Brookhaven, I, like a lot of folks, overreacted and said, boy, what in the world, why in the world did you do something like that, you know, in terms of that? But as I got a chance to watch what was done, the tape itself, and also to listen to Mr. Jones, then I found out that I overreacted. You know, there's a scripture in the Bible says, "Be quick to listen and slow to speak."[1644.41][1644.41](APPLAUSE). And I think that that's our circumstance from the governor all the way down, of people who have said things, and in the midst of it, you know, we've lost a teachable moment. We all make mistakes. I think it was a mistake in terms of the skill, all right? But it's a mistake. I don't see any incentive, intention, any malice in it. It may have embarrassed, you know, the school or whatever, but it doesn't seem to be a policy of a fireable affair, and I hope that y'all will not overreact and give the man his job back as a part of it.[1691.71][1691.71](APPLAUSE). Finally, I do think that this is a teachable moment for our students all over this district. All of us make mistakes in life, but, you know, but we deserve second chances. And also, we should not let social media determine policy and drive our decision. Thank you.[1714.88][1714.88](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much, Reverend Crudup. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, parents, Forest Hill family. I bring greetings from Merle High School as the band booster president under the direction of Mr. Brian Jefferson. I'm here to support Forest Hill Band. I'm gonna try to say this and not be emotional about it. I am an alumni of Jackson Public School, and I once was a member of the Near High School Band. Our band program now is not what it used to be back in the nineties. We are struggling. Our issue curriculum programs are struggling. Out of seven high schools, we only have four strong bands. It's Callaway, Merle, Jim Hill, and Forest Hill. Where we are now, taking Mr. Jones away, you don't leave us with three bands, strong bands. Please give Mr. Jones his job. We need to have bigger things we need to concentrate on. We need to have bigger things we need to concentrate on, and it's our district being a Level F, a Grade F. These kids need their band program. Some kids are not academically strong. They're depending on these band scholarships. They depend on the band scholarships to get them their future in education. If you're taking them away from the band program, we leaving them to the streets. Everybody have Channel 12, Channel 3, and Channel 16 news. It's a death every day in our city. Let's not lose what we have left in our district to the streets. Please allow our kids back in the band hall and allow Mr. Jones to further our kids' future in the band, and this is coming from Merrell High School. I'm not part of Forest Hill family, but I am one district, one family, one sound.
Thank you so much.
Stephanie Nelson?
I'm Stephanie, I attend Merrell High School. I'm a dancer, and I'm part of the SOP Band. We are here to stand with Mr. Jones and Forest Hill Band because as bands together, we're supposed to stand as a unit, as one, and we believe that it would be a disservice to the students and the school and the community to lose such a dynamic leader. Band directors, they have such a huge impact on students' lives, like mine myself. He teaches me things that I thought I would never know. Band directors does that, they do that. We ask that you please reconsider your decision on firing him and give the students what they would need because some students, band is really the only thing that they have. Some students don't have anything else, it may be family issues or any other thing, but me personally, if I go out on that band field, that's where I leave everything. I just leave everything on the band's field, on the football field. I feel proud when I do what I do, and I hope that you guys reconsider your decision.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Lastly is Jacoby Wesley.
On behalf of the Forest Hill Band, I think we're going on like one and a half week we've been able, I'd say our band created, so we're gonna be able to say it here, and we're gonna say what it mean. Band, stay ready.
We appreciate all of your comments. Thank you so much for taking the time to come out and share your remarks. Thank you. Board, our next item on the agenda, item six, A, our superintendent's reports and announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. I too want to just appreciate the comments that we received here this evening. Really appreciate the numbers of folks who've come out this evening to express your concern, to take a stance and to name that stance and to undergird that with some very clear experiences that folks have had. I'll make some comments specific to the incident with Forest Hill, but I want to first have, actually, I want to have Mr. McCracken to come in and provide some updates to regarding the bond.
Okay.
We'll start with that as part of my reports, and then I'll make some announcements.
Great, thank you. We'll move to item B on the bond projects update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Certainly would welcome that energy and that spirit entering into the bond program as well, because we all need your spirit and your help in order to move this, our bond project forward. But just to give you a very brief synopsis as to what has taken place in the last couple of weeks or three weeks, we've advertised for architects and engineers for the bond program. We have the advertisements, of course, in the Clarion Ledger, the Jackson Advocate, the Mississippi Lynx Architectural Engineering periodicals, as well as Jackson Public Schools' Jackson Public Schools' website. So we had a number of architects and engineers to submit a total of right at 45, so there's high interest and enthusiasm to do the work for the bond program. Our anticipated time, as we stated here, the date for a pre-submitting conference was scheduled or was held on October 11th, and it was very successful. The date for submittals due the end of this week, which is 19th, and at that time, we will begin to the process of selecting the professionals once those are submitted. And after that, we will begin preparing for the architect and engineer's contract November 1st through the 16th, and then architects and engineers recommendation to the board December 4th, and then planning session and the notice to proceed for work to be done with the bond program. I won't get into the dynamics of all the schools and projects that associate with the bond program at this juncture, but we do and we will have right at 12 schools that will begin work simultaneously in addition to some outside services such as Newell Field, ROTC facility, and the A-PAC facilities. That's a very brief update, and as the bond program progresses, we will certainly update you and keep you apprised of all the details of the bond program. Any questions? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCracken. Can I interrupt to and make an announcement relative to this? Ms. Williams shared with the board today that we have received some citizens who have stepped up to say they would like to offer themselves for service on our bond oversight committee, and we would like to get that started, but we do not yet have enough citizens to step forward and offer themselves to help. There is one ward in particular that has not submitted anyone to step up, and we certainly hope that that will be remedied soon so that we can begin our work in collaboration and partnership with the bond oversight committee that we established. So please, if you know folk from across the city who would have talents to offer, please ask them to submit their name. It's a very simple process, and the application is on our web, but we need more folk to step up and say they'd like to help. Thank you so much. Excuse me for interrupting.
Dr. Harrison, the date that we had for submission of applications was yesterday. Would it be, I don't know if we need to take action on this or not, but would it be permissible to extend that date another week in the interest of getting a full, more robust pool from whom to draw?
I would like that to happen, actually. Do we need anything formal?
I think if you direct it, it can be reposted on the website and published in whatever manner the administration would like to do so.
That would be very helpful because we want to capture our entire city, each of our wards. Thank you so much for that. We'll extend it for one more week, which would be, what, this time next week?
Sure.
Thank you. Dr. Green?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. Want to again thank Mr. McCracken for the updates there. Want to, as often as possible, come before the board and the community with updates regarding the bond. It's such a major undertaking, and there's so many moving parts that we want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible with regard to that work. And so again, thank you, sir. I have several announcements that I want to share with members of the board and members of the community. First, there, as many of you know, we do have our parent-teacher conference day, which will be held Monday, October the 22nd, that's this coming Monday. At all JPS schools, there will be no school for students. Schools will be open from 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. for parents to meet with parents, with teachers, to discuss student progress. The reports will be, progress reports will also be issued at this time. I wanted to encourage all of our parents and guardians to take advantage of this opportunity to meet with teachers, to talk with them about students' academic progress, with their attendance, as well as engagement and behavior as is appropriate. We certainly don't want to lose this opportunity to talk about student achievement. Another, our next announcement, this is the National School Lunch Week. We are celebrating the National School Lunch Week until Friday, October 19th. Schools are having contests and special programs, special menus. We encourage parents and school communities, members, to stop by and to enjoy some of the great cuisine prepared in our wonderful cafeterias by our food service department. The cost for adults is $3.50, and for students under $10, or 10 years of age, is $2.50. We encourage, we appreciate the support of all community members, especially regarding our food service department, and we acknowledge the hard work that they do every day to ensure that young people get the nourishment that they need. The JPS Wellness Walk, the 14th Annual, Jackson Public Schools Wellness Walk, takes place Thursday, October 25th, that's next Thursday, at the Hughes Field located at 545 Ellis Avenue. Registration begins at 3:00, and the walk begins at 4:00 p.m. This is a community-wide event. It's free, it's open to the public. JPS employees, parents, students, community members are all encouraged to attend and to participate. And for more information, please dial 601-960-8911. Again, that's 601-960-8911. At this time, I'd like to make a special presentation to a student. I'd like to ask Mr. Demonte Russell to please come forward. Ladies and gentlemen, Demonte Russell is a 6'5", 220-pound senior defensive for the Provine High School, who has recently been presented with a jersey by Under Armour announcing his invitation to their 2019 All-America High School Football Game. This outstanding student athlete has committed to Mississippi State and is ready to measure up against the nation's best. His career stats include the following: six solo tackles, 110 total tackles, 4.7 tackles per game, 14.5 sacks, three fumble recoveries, and 10 passes deflected. According to his coaches and teachers, he constantly works for high achievement in the classroom and demonstrates outstanding performances both on and off the field. He is a true leader and a team player. He's a very respectful and humble young man. He credits his family, coaches, and school for his success as a student athlete. The Under Armour All-America Game will take place January 3rd, 2019, at the Camping World Stadium in Orlando, Florida. The game will also, it will air on ESPN. At this time, I would like members of his family and staff from Provine High School to please stand and be recognized. And now, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a round of applause for Provine's star
Congratulations, young man. You have a bright future. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Another round of applause for Mr. Russell. Dr. Harrison, members of the board, I have just a couple of more highlights and then final comments. As many of you know, we just got a release of the, of the state's, Mississippi State's accountability results for our district. The Mississippi Department of Education released letter grades for schools and districts based on the state's A-through-F accountability system and evaluates how schools and districts perform in the 2017-2018 school year. Accountability grades, as many of you know, but some may not, are based on the results of the Mississippi Academic Assessment Program, the MAP, for English Language Arts and Mathematics. MAP tests were administered to students in grades 3 through 8 and in high school during the 2017-18 school year. These tests were aligned with the Mississippi College and Career Ready standards and are used to assess student statewide. So there's lots of data that, I won't go through all of it, and some of it was mentioned earlier, but there are a few things, a few schools that I do want to highlight. While we saw lots of improvement, we're very pleased with the continued progress of our schools. We know that there's much more work to be done, but I'll note these. Rain's Elementary School improved four letter grades from an F to an A in 272 points. Dawson and Lester Elementary Schools improved three letter grades, rising from F to B ratings, increasing 127 points and 187 points respectfully, respectively. Barack H. Obama Elementary School, formerly Davis, is the number-one elementary school in the state for the second year in a row. And in spite of being the top-rated elementary school in the state, they continue to increase the points. They increased by 90 points during the 2017-2018 school year, from 582 points to 672 total points on a 700-point scale. Two JPS elementary schools ranked in, two other JPS elementary schools ranked in the top 20 statewide. That's Power A-PAC, that's number nine, and Key Elementary School, which is number 15. The number of A-rated schools in JPS increased from four to nine, including eight elementary schools and one middle school. Very much so appreciative of that work. And lastly, we continue to see improvements in decreasing the number of F-rated schools and increasing our high school graduation rate over last year. So lots to be celebrating, and I want to make sure that we acknowledge that progress and acknowledge all of our educators who are continuing to do the really important work in schools every day. Let's give them a round of applause. And now to conclude my comments this evening, again, I appreciate the commentary, the sentiments, the heartfelt pleas and comments from all of those who are here this evening and all of those who are here in support of the others who... of those who are here in support of the others who spoke. Want to make a comment regarding the incident with the Forest Hill band, high school band. First, I want to thank all of the members of the public who, for their attention to this matter, for weighing in. We received a number of calls and emails and lots of folks had commentary on social media and other medium. And for weighing in again on this matter, and we've attempted to address it as quickly and as appropriately as possible. Late last week, my team completed a thorough investigation into the skit performance of the Forest Hill High School Band that occurred in Brookhaven on October 5th. Our investigation included interviews with all involved adults, as well as students, several students, and a review of the relevant policies and state statutes. Based on the findings of that investigation and after considering the potentially grave danger in which those students were placed as a result of the performance in Brookhaven, given the context of that community, we have taken personnel action. In addition, we've identified several areas and ways to improve and to clarify expectations for all student performances going forward. Furthermore, we received, as many of you know, notification from the Mississippi High School Activities Association that the Forest Hill High School Band has been placed on restrictive probation for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year. We agree wholeheartedly with members of the community that our students were only, were simply following the instructions that they were given and should bear no responsibility for the performance in Brookhaven or for that performance. Therefore, we have requested a hearing to appeal this sanction against the band. Our students deserve the right to continue to perform and to develop their musical talent, and we want to continue to provide that. I know that the personnel action will not be a popular one and has not been a popular one. These matters are never easy, and often, there are differing opinions as to the most appropriate action to take. Unfortunately, these difficult decisions must be made, and I pledge to maintain a focus on student safety, on student growth, and on organizational health and effectiveness. I thank you for your time. For members, that concludes my comments.
Thank you so much, Dr. Green. Item eight, thank you, guests, for being respectful. Item eight. Eight A. Sherilyn Miller.
Oh, no, no, Blair Lee, Lanier High School.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I missed item seven. Mr. Blair Lee, our student.
Miss.
Ms. Blair Lee, okay, I just need to go home now. Ms. Blair Lee, thank you so much, from Lanier High School, our student school board representative.
Good evening. My name is Blair Lee, and I am the student board rep for Lanier High School. It is my pleasure to come here today and share some of the great things that are going on at Lanier High School where legacies are constructed daily on Maple Street. At Lanier, we are given many opportunities to excel and be prepared for the future, whether we are going to college or going into our career fields. We are offered many courses that give us the potential to succeed. These include AP English, Biology, and French. Also, we have dual enrollment courses, such as College Algebra, English Comp. 1 and 2, and Western Civilization. One thing we are very proud of is our Academy Health Services Program. This academy will introduce students to the science of clinical services, clinical technologies, healthcare support services, and gathering and analyzing evidence and documenting facts. Our receiving pathways are nursing and emergency medical technicians. We recently received a retired ambulance at the passing of the key ceremony. We thank our supporters, AMR, UMMC, and the Lanier National Alumni Association for making this a reality. The ambulance is used as a resource to enhance our knowledge and our career choices. Our Health Academy is instrumental in helping students learn about health initiatives. Right now, the academy teachers are teaching students about the importance of breast cancer, awareness, and prevention. Throughout the, throughout the school, teachers are incorporating assignments that are associated with breast cancer in their classes, from art to science to history to math. The academy is also holding, yeah, the academy is also holding a decorating contest to spread awareness throughout the school. Lastly, I would like to thank the board for giving me an opportunity to talk about my school and explaining to you why we say legacies are constructed daily on Maple Street. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report. And, excuse me, Ms. Miller, actually, it's Dr. Merritt next. I just got everybody confused, so sorry. Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
All right, great evening to Dr. Harrison and Board of Trustees and to Dr. Green. You should have a CAP update report. Just for the record, we have currently cleared five standards.
Excuse me, Dr. Merritt.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have that report?
I believe we received it today.
Oh, okay. I do not have it, so sorry. Go on, you may continue. I just hadn't read that email yet. We'll take good notes, no worries.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we're currently, we have cleared five standards. Currently, we are looking this month to possibly clear an additional six. Those six standards are as follows. We will have a revisit of standard 15, which addresses professional development. That standard was monitored last year, and 53 of the 54 schools did clear the standard, but we have to remember it's all or none, and so we're just revisiting that one school that did not clear that standard. Standard 13, which deals with the teaching days and instructional time. Standard 21, which is basically a policy with student promotion, and action was taken on that on May 1st of this year, and so we have provided the department that information for review. As well as standard 22 will be reviewed at the end of the month, and that deals with alternative education. And then, standard 28, student teacher ratios. And standard 29, which is transportation, which where the buses will be inspected, those that were cited in the audit, as well as the arrival and departure time of buses will be monitored as well. We continue to have CAP meetings as well as, excuse me, cross-functional team meetings to make sure that we are addressing all of the standards as outlined according to our corrective action plan. I announced on the previous meeting that we, our accreditation status is that of probation, and we are charged with developing a, another corrective action plan to address the deficiencies that are on record and to submit to the Office of Accreditation by December 3rd, 2018. And so, again, as I always state, that we are continuing to work with a sense of urgency to make sure that we are addressing all standards that are on record and to ensure that we clear them in a timely manner.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. I have one quick question, and it may be too long to address, but can you remind us what standard 13, what the issue is around instructional time?
Yes, ma'am. So, the issue with that, according to the investigative audit, there was, when they looked at several schedules, there was not 330 minutes identified an instructional day, and I believe that was with a pre-K classroom where that citation was. With the teaching days, it was an issue, of course, we must have 180 instructional days, and we held commencement exercises before the 180th day of school, and that was in the 2016-2017 school year. But as you all remember, on last year, the decision was made to adjust the schedule to ensure that we receive, that students received 180 instructional days, and that we had to change the venue to accommodate that decision, and so those were the issues that were, that are associated with that standard.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Board, do you have other questions or comments?
I've got a question about the corrective action plan that's due December 3rd. Is that something that we will be able to reprise, much of the work that went into the corrective action plan last year, or is it something that will require us to reinvent the will to a certain extent?
We will not have to reinvent the will much. It's mostly with, it's mostly updating the timelines in which we will address some of the implementation of the standards. I take for example, Ms. Marshall Thomas had standard 11, which is our dropout prevention plan, and she's really taken ownership of it, in which dropout prevention is a K-12 plan. And in order to make it a living document and making sure that we're doing all things that are important to that standard, we have considerably, or Ms. Thomas and her team has considerably reworked standard 11, so it's much different than what you see that's been board-approved now, and I believe that's coming before you next month. But mostly, everything else, it's just a matter of updating the timelines to make sure that we implement the actions as we said we would.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a question. This is just to understand the report. So, there, I see the ones that are cleared, and there are some standards that are crossed out. Does that mean those have been cleared already?
No, sir. So, I did a strike through those in that those are the ones that we will definitely be addressing with the new corrective action plan. We are going to look at standards six and eight, and I think possibly 10, that deals with permanent records, residency, immunizations, and trying to clear those possibly in November. But in order to go ahead and get the corrective action plan done, you know, it may be included in there, but we may request clearance for those documents before it is approved by the State Board of Education.
Okay. And the ones that are highlighted?
Those are the ones that we are looking for the department to come and clear this month.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, board? Thank you so much for your work, and extend that to your team. This is a Herculean effort, and we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. We appreciate you all's support.
Now, item eight, Ms. Miller, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Harrison, Dr. Green, members of the board, I present to you for your information and action approval, approval of the monthly financial report for the month ending September 30, 2018. This is, of course, our report that provides to you our monthly report of our statement of fund balances, our budget status report, our report of our bank reconciliation, and also a district cash flow report. I will, just to give you an update on where we are financially, we, the auditors, our external auditors are currently evaluating the district's books as of for fiscal year into June 30, 2018. It looks very positive. It looks like we will have, again, another year of being able to add to our fund balance, which is a good direction for us to go in, but we will continue to keep you informed as we move forward in the audit process.
Thank you so much for that report. Board members, you've received this earlier. Do you have questions or comments for Ms. Miller?
I was just wondering if we could use this opportu, well, maybe we could pull item C, the bond, just to get an update on where we are in the process.
Okay, well, we're doing monthly financial report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm out of order. I'm just, sorry.
That's cool. That just makes me feel a little bit better. Other board members, questions or comments regarding the financial report? Hearing none, do you hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the monthly financial report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's been approved. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Under item nine, we have four items. Ms. Miller is presenting all. Dr. Sebag, do you have a request?
I would just request we pull C for just an update on the, on the bond.
Do we need to vote on that? We'll just pull it. Okay, we'll do it the other way. So, board, if we pull item C, do I hear a recommendation to consider A, B, and D together? Is that how we do that?
I move that we approve items A, B, and D.
Do I hear a second to approve under finance consent agenda items A, B, and D?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve under finance consent agenda items A, B, and D. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved those items. Let the record show. Now, we are considering item C. Ms. Miller?
Yes, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Green, again, members of the board, I'm present, we're presenting to you the approval of the resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of the General Obligation Bond Series 2018 in an amount not to exceed $65 million and all other related documents for the purpose of financing certain capital improvements. Just as an update, board members, we went through, of course, the, the work and the bond approval on August 7th, on August 7th, that the referendum was approved to issue $65 million in bonds to do a lot of work in the district. We have continued that process. Just as a matter of update, we have paid the election expenses to the City of Jackson. We made that payment prior to the September 30th date that they had asked us to do. The total amount for the election was $114,390.57, significantly less than what I think had been discussed quite publicly.
Yeah, we need to let the record show.
Let the record show. And that, that, I did hand-deliver that check to the city clerk, so we have sufficiently handled our situation as it relates to the City of Jackson. We have, in these documents, what, the finance team has been meeting, again, behind the scenes to continue work in the process. We have presented this bond issue to the Mississippi Development Bank. I presented there on two weeks, two weeks ago with bond counsel. They approved us moving forward, and we're very, very supportive of the work that the district is doing. The credit committee was actually very complimentary of this board and the action that the district had taken to move us forward to not only meet the requirements and the needs of the Department of Education, but also recognizing the need for the district. So, we were able to attend that and got that approval. We did, we are now preparing tomorrow. I will have a rating agency call with Standard and Poor's to solidify, if not get an increase in our bond rating tomorrow. We anticipate that being about 30, 40-minute call. We've already, I've already been corresponding back with the evaluators with Standard and Poor's, so basically, this is a formality. We've provided that information to them, so that will happen tomorrow, and then we will continue moving forward. We are anticipating pricing the bonds in, in November, November 13th and 14th in New York, and at that point, we will have those bonds priced, and then we anticipate closing around November 28th, 29th. We'd like to close right after Thanksgiving, and generally, once we close and you get all the signatures, the money will be transferred into our bank account the next day, and Mr. McCracken can start work.
Yay.
Or start paying bills. We did add, the finance team looked at it, and of course, the underwriters were initially approved, were Sebert, Cisneros, and Shank. There was a minority-owned firm out of New York. When talking with some other underwriters and some other bond issuers and some folks, we looked at the fact that we needed, we felt like we needed a Mississippi presence in order to help us sell those bonds. Basically, when you have a local underwriter, they actually help sell you the bonds at a lower cost, so we get, that means lower interest rate, more money to the district. So, Sebert, Cisneros, and Shank's agreed to bring on three local firms, and they will all share the same, share in the fee, so there's no increase in fee. Sebert is actually taking less to include them in. Cruz and Associates, Duncan Williams, and Stevens. They all have a local presence here, two of them Duncan Williams and of course, Sebert, are minority-owned firms, they're women-owned firms. They all have a presence here. So, we are collectively continuing to work behind the scenes, what you have here, a lot of draft documents, the POS, the The POS, the Preliminary Official Statement, has a lot of work. I'm working with a company that is helping us to update all this information, to get it listed on Emma, so there's a lot going on behind the scenes, but we will continue to have this. We are right on track to have this closed before the end of the year, as we said before to the public.
That's great. Thank you for your work. And the information presented was very informative, describing the school district, it was very helpful as a board member. It's very helpful. Do we have any other questions or comments to Ms. Miller?
I have one question. In addition to the election fees, there was a lot, there's been a lot of attention paid to the fees for professional services that will potentially be paid for this issue. What update do you have in regards to the costs that we'll be paying for our professionals?
Right now, we don't have any, anything in concrete, again, because we wanted to make sure that we got this part done. We'll end up making sure, we wanted to make sure that the three local firms were okay with agreeing with sharing that fifteen percent of the amount with the underwriters. We will start, once we start getting toward pricing, we will start hammering those numbers out. I talked with Mr. Thompson at Government Consultants today, as well as the lead folks at Seibert, to make sure, as well as with Steve Eds, our lead bond counsel, to make sure that we will continue to remain under, significantly under, that budget. Once we start going toward pricing, we will have some solid numbers, or more solid numbers as far as fees are concerned.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Ms. Miller? Do I hear a motion to approve Item C, approval of the resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of general obligation bonds?
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item passes. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Dr. Knox, Consent Agenda Items under General, is Dr. Knox here? 2018-2019 District Test Security Plan.
Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board, the Mississippi Department of Education requires that each district school participating in the statewide assessment program to have a district school test security plan that outlines how the integrity of the test, testing will be maintained, that is, to protect the integrity of the examination and to ensure that the results are valid and reliable. What you have before you is the foundational document that is required to be posted with the department before the end of this month. We'll be adding addendums to the document as we train school test coordinators throughout the year for the particular testing window. So this is a requirement of the MDE, and we will add addendums. Depending on what they require us to do, we may make some deletions, but what you have before you is required to be posted before the end of this month.
Thank you. Board members, do you have questions or comments for Dr. Knox? I do have a question, and I'm not sure, Dr. Merritt, you might also be able to help me understand, but it regards our CAP and the degree to which test security was an issue in any of our standards that we failed to meet. So, was sixteen-one that you said we had cleared, or we're still in need of clearing?
We have not cleared.
We have not cleared it. So what is the relationship between our test security plan and the degree to which we're ready to pass the CAP? Is that a legitimate question? How does this plan help us not fail that standard again?
Well, if everyone does what he or she is supposed to do, we'll meet the standard.
Okay. And does this plan have any mechanism that helps the board understand how we are sure that everyone does what they're supposed to do?
We've outlined processes and systems. We have a professional development plan. We plan to monitor the systems that we have in place, and if everyone performs as he or she should, then we will meet the standard.
And, excuse me.
May I?
Sure.
Support in this. Could you perhaps, Dr. Knox, share any enhance, any enhancements that we've made to the plan this year? Any changes that we've made to the plan, or any supports that we will provide to help individuals to follow the plan as stated?
Well, what we did, since we got the information at the end of the seventeen testing window, we revised what we did for seventeen testing, for eighteen testing, seventeen, eighteen testing, and we provided more personalized training, specific training. We broke down our training from being just a general session. We actually modified it to maybe five or six sessions so that we could make sure that everyone understood what he or she was supposed to do technically. Now, in terms of the, just the mechanics of testing, we are asking individuals to, as a matter of fact, we, along with the state, we're doing additional training, and we have started early with our schools, so that, I know the elementary schools don't test until the spring, but we have already began to make them knowledgeable of the requirements of testing. As a matter of fact, Dr. Lrenda Cheeks has set up a SharePoint site within our office so that we can share documents, but people who are not even involved in testing this fall, only the high schools will be involved this fall, but we are trying to make people aware, and we are trying to promote, we use this term "team," we're trying to promote a team effort. Although the principal should not be involved in the actual administration of the test, the principal should be involved with the development and the, what we need to do in order to have people in place, have systems in place for the testing to develop and run smoothly. So these are the kinds of things that we're doing, and I want to reemphasize that if everyone does what he or she is supposed to do, then we won't have any problems with the, meeting the requirements of the Standard 16 and clearing the CAP.
Great. And just a correlate question. Do, is there, do we, is there any way that partners, our school partners who want to help in our schools, knowing that our test protocol needs some support in, actually in the schools? Is this an opportunity for organizations who want to partner and as well to help in test monitoring, that type of thing, or is that something that might not necessarily be helpful?
Well, we welcome all who would be willing to go through the training.
Okay.
And to participate as a, as a proctor.
Yes.
Only certified staff can serve as test administrators.
Yes, great.
So anyone that qualifies to be a proctor, parents, community members, or business leaders, whoever wants to be a proctor, if they're willing to come and be trained, then we'll welcome their availability and their assistance with the testing.
How would one learn about the training that's required?
Well, since you mentioned it, we can post it on our website in terms of the actual training dates. We make that aware, make the school's test coordinators aware, but we can also post it and post it in enough time for them to share it with their adopters or whoever would like to assist with the testing.
And do you have a ballpark date for when that might start, if anybody's out there listening and wanted to be a proctor?
Well, for the high school testing, which starts after the Thanksgiving holidays, we'll probably be training about mid-November.
Great.
We have to wait until the testing companies do their training so that we'll know what we need to do, in addition to what the testing companies have done, to make sure that we are in compliance with Standard 16.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions or comments, Board members, regarding Dr. Knox's report? Do we hear a motion to accept the 2018-19 District Security Plan?
I have a motion to accept.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we accept the school year district test security plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item passes. Thank you, Dr. Knox. Item 11, Ms. Lyons, Staff Personnel Matters. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Dr. Green, Dr. Hairston, members of the board, on behalf of the administration, I would like to ask for the approval of Staff Personnel Matters as listed in more material.
Thank you. Board members, you've received this information supplied by Ms. Lyons. Do you have any questions or comments? Do we have board members reviewing their notes?
I didn't get an answer.
I know one, we had a question. Has your question been answered, Ms. Jones?
Give me just a minute.
Excuse us, Ms. Lyons.
Dr. Hairston, I would like to pull M1.
Item M1.
For discussion in executive session.
Certainly. Ms. Lyons, you see Item M1?
I do.
You're prepared to pull that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments, Board members? Do I hear a motion to consider for approval? Item 11A, Staff Personnel Matters with the exclusion of Item M1. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that item has been approved except for Item M.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Board, do we have other business? Item 9, 8? What is it? Thirteen? Do I hear a motion to consider to hold an executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we consider to hold an executive session. We will, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none. We will close the meeting? No, we have to vote. No, we did that. We voted. Thank you. We will close the meeting. We thank you all so much for coming, but we need to vote to consider going into executive session. Thank you so much for your support. Get some Bond Oversight Committee folk. Got one more week. There's a ward that needs one.